Quick, just some general housekeeping. Can everybody please sign in at the sign in sheet?
I don't want to be presumptuous.
So because we're seeking some funding through the State Revolving Fund, part of that process is going through this public meeting process, sharing information. And we want to make sure we get all the attendees' names. And if we have a bunch of questions, we want to document them and record them and respond to the questions and make sure we get all the information distributed.
Is your mic on?
I do not know. That's why I asked. Is that any, is that any better?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. All right. So this is a public meeting in response to the State SRF for the Town of Silt Water Treatment Plan Improvements Project.
Can you tell everybody what the State SRF means?
The State R F is the State Revolving Fund. It is a fund where many municipalities or water districts, water communities, wastewater districts seek, seek this fund to obtain funding for larger projects. They basically reduce the interest rate from the, the publicized rate out of the marketplace to help save this municipality's money. And in some instances, they allow principal forgiveness if the town meets certain criteria, and we'll discuss that here in a little bit. But it's a major funding agency that people go through to seek funding for these larger projects. It is, right? Currently, this is Feedback City. My, my, there we go. Does that help? No. If you mute your computer, maybe?
I'm mute the speakers.
That's what I'm trying to do.
It's actually coming out.
Yep, got it.
Yep.
Okay. So.
What was I? Just finished with the SRF. And white people borrow through the SRF.
So, yeah, the SRF is a, it's funded, actually funded through EPA. Currently, through the State Revolving Fund money, maybe people have heard of the bipartisan infrastructure law. That money has provided money to many different communities through principal forgiveness. And we'll talk more about some of the details of that when we get through this presentation. So this meeting, we're going to go through, um, quick agenda. We're going to go through the why of this project. So we're going to talk about kind of the planning projections and some of the criteria we used, making sure we can meet and address all the regulatory information, talk about what's going on with the current water plant. We're talking about how we can address some of the issues that have been identified, some of the selected alternative, how we're going to address that, including seeking a construction manager at risk. We have to go through because this is money that's coming through the federal government down to the state government. We have to talk about some of the environmental needs, and we'll talk about that summary. We'll talk about the impact on rates, the project schedule, and then we'll open up the floor to questions to any members of the project team, be it the engineering team, be it the town trustees, be it the finance, be it any other members of the engineering team, if that works for everybody. So real quick, my name is Patrick Radabaugh. I'm here with Dewberry. My engineering team is in the back. I have Sam, I have Sage, and I have Kiriya. So together, we've been working with the town for a while, looking at the facility and planning for the future. We also have Tony Zankinella, who's a special assistant to the town and operates the treatment plants. Jim Mann is helping on the, the finance and rate part of the project. So we're looking at the current water demands for the, the city and the town. This, this map or this figure basically shows that currently the town is producing about, requires about 300,000 gallons per day. But in the peak summer, when demands are higher, they push almost half a million gallons per day. Looking forward, going, the town is looking to grow. We're looking at producing an average day demand of almost 700,000 gallons a day. And in, in the peak summer, that demand would be about 1.2 million gallons per day. Those water production numbers compared to communities of similar sizes are relatively low, primarily because the Town of Silt has a very wide system of raw water use for irrigation. So assuming that continues, those projections should hold. But in the event that it doesn't, we're, we would recommend that the treatment plan leave room to possibly expand to three MGD in the future.
That's how it was originally designed, I thought.
Fifty-year gap.
We can talk about that here in just a minute, and then, so from a, a water regulatory perspective, some of the things we are concerned about were disinfection byproducts, which is a function of chlorine and TOC. It's something that we're taking care of now, but going forward in the future, we need to take care of. The biggest thing they're really concerned of is people have brought to our attention is the water quality issues associated with taste and color issues with the water. So we want to really make sure we meet the secondary standards for iron and manganese, and we provide a treatment system that will treat and remove those so the water taste and odor and color issues go away with the improved water plant. Now, looking at the water plant evaluation, I, hopefully this will answer your question, and if not, we can talk more about that. So this water plant was constructed right around 2005-ish, and I'm going to talk a lot about this figure. So in this figure, the blue and black bars are the, um, current average day and max day production numbers. The horizontal bars, which I'm colorblind, so I'm, I don't know the colors, but what is this one?
Gold.
Gold, and this one?
Purple.
Purple. Those are the respective capacities that can be put out by the water plant. The purple, you have two different filter systems at the water plant. So with one of those systems offline, the purple line is what that plant can produce. With one of them offline, if both are operating and functioning and everything's working perfectly, the gold line is what it can produce. So you can see right now, if one of them falls out of service or something happens to it, the town would have problems producing water for the community. There is no real iron and manganese treatment system at the plant, and going forward, we'd recommend that we do that so we can address the taste, color issues that were, that many people are reporting. And make sure when we're looking forward, we can improve how this plant operates by putting in some pre-treatment system to improve the turbidity. Now, did, hopefully I addressed your question? Maybe? Okay.
How many, how much more extra is that costing for all these extra things that you're going to put in?
I will get to the costs here in a little bit.
I, I think his original question, though, when you had talked about the peak daily demand of what the town needs, was upwards of 3 million gallons per day. And I think that the comment was, he thought that that's what our current plant was originally designed for.
So the, the current plant, for whatever reason, the membranes can only produce what this gold line does on an average day. That's what it can produce. When we use these filtration systems, you can't just run them all the time. So if you were driving your car, you may be able to drive your car for four to five hours, but then you have to stop for gas, stretch your legs, use the restroom, et cetera. Same with the membrane. We can't run it all the time, everything, so there's, we have to do some things to it each day. So despite the fact that the membrane, each membrane system is rated for half a million gallons a day, it can actually produce half a million gallons per day.
So I think the question was, um, the design capacity, uh, original design of the old plant was 1 million gallons, 500,000 each, that we are not getting.
You cannot do it.
Yeah, it was never designed for 2 or 3 million.
It was never designed for 2 or 3 million. It was designed for a million, and it cannot do it.
Well, it was designed for 10 more subdivisions. That's a lot.
And that was designed for, um, how many years?
Fifty.
It was 15 years while we were sold on it, back when Stillwater was approved. Stillwater was going to pay for it. And Stillwater went down the tubes, we ended up paying for it. And I think we're still paying for it.
That's correct.
There's two years left on the current.
Still two years left, paying for the one we got, which is no good.
But it was also designed to add, add to it.
We will, we will get to that.
That's the problem. Will we still continue to draw our water out of the Colorado River?
We have to. That's, well, that or the wells, but there's.
So the river changes. Will the fluctuation of iron and magnesium always change? Due to flow, due to canyon?
So, let, can we address that question at the end? That's a great question, and I want, I do want to address that question. But I'd like to address that question then, if you don't mind. So the, the current water plant does not have the capacity to meet the current average day with one unit out of service, and that is a big issue for resiliency-wise within the community. So if something were to go wrong to one of the filters, um, this plant would struggle to provide water to the residents. So when we identify these problems, we look forward and try to identify some solutions that could address all these. And I'm going to kind of skim through these really quick and try to stay out of the detail, but just to show you the depth, that we did look at multiple alternatives, trying to address these issues, in the effect that we could find something that was cost-effective to try and minimize the impacts to the town. The biggest thing is we need to find a pre-treatment system so we could reduce the turbidity, because as somebody pointed out, the, the Colorado River, the water in the river changes seasonally and sometimes hourly, and it has different, all these little particles in the river, and that impacts the treatment process. And we need a treatment process that can handle very few to a lot.
Don't we also have wells?
We do have wells, but the wells do not have the capacity we need to meet the demands. We need to have a, we need to have a treatment system that can redo, to address the taste and odor and color issues with the water. And then we need to have a filtration system to meet the Safe Drinking Water Act requirements. And we would recommend, based on the demand growth, that we have a firm capacity, so being able to provide 1 million gallons a day of treated water with one unit out of So ideally, we'd be looking at possibly two trains, one MGD each. You take one out of service, the, the water plant could still produce one MGD. Everybody still has their water.
Quick question. Based upon the subdivisions that have already been approved, will this meet the capacity when, when they're all built out?
This, so we went through the town planning projections. If we go back a couple of slides, you saw the population numbers, and I, I want to say they went up to almost 8,000, and that is essentially a 20-year plan build-out through the town planning department. So that one MGD, while it would not be able to provide the peak day, it would be able to provide more than the average day of build-out.
And that's essentially double where we're at right now.
Yes. So we came up with some alternatives to address these issues. One, the turbidity, these particles in the river water. And we looked at this thing called a solids contact clarifier. We looked at putting in plate fillers with filtration to help us with that. We looked at two different types of filtration. We looked at a sand filter, which many different people use. Denver Water uses sand filters. City of Lewisville, Town of Superior, Town of Greeley, all use sand filters. We also looked at membranes or expanding the existing system to try to include that, but putting a pre-treatment and system in front of it while expanding the capacity. We looked at taking a, a package treatment plant. And we looked at this other innovative process that allows it to do all this in a smaller footprint called ballasted flaculation. So real quickly, just some site plans showing you that we, all four of these alternatives will fit on the project site, just to the northeast of the current water treatment This is just a giant summary, looking at all the things, but when we look at all the different alternatives, when we look at all the different alternatives, two of the things really came to mind. We'd be able, we had to be able to, um, handle the iron and manganese, the taste and odor issues associated with water. And we also wanted to be able to handle the wide range and turbidity that we see in the Colorado River. So those two separated out some two alternatives, essentially alternatives, um, one and four are a little bit better at handing the, handling the, the associated ranges in turbidity. We prepared cost estimates based on these costs. All of these costs essentially, um, range from about 19.2 million up to about 21, depending upon looking at the alternative. The alternative, I want to stress, is looking at the existing system that is Alternative 2B and expanding it. You'll notice there are two numbers in Alternative 2B. The existing membranes last somewhere between three to six years. They are currently two years old. By the time we're building this, they will be at the end of their life. We'll have to replace them. So the number in parentheses is the additional cost going in and replacing those after we're done with this project. So looking at this project all in, we're looking at some, with a construction cost somewhere of around 21 or 22 million dollars. When we look at the annual costs, we're looking at three staff members.
Excuse me, Pat, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if you could maybe wait just a minute. We got a technical issue in the other room, so we got a room full of people trying to listen to the meeting over there.
Great.
And they are unzoomed right now.
Okay, no problem.
Can you just give them a minute?
Yep.
Maybe they'll reconnect.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So what happens, um, if there's a day where the peak usage is over the capacity for the filter, are we getting like unfiltered water?
No, 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 no. Great question. Great question. So the town also has a bunch of water storage tanks. And so that's the nice part about a water storage tank. And so in a day when they, the town water plant can't meet the demand, the water tank level goes down. Now, you can only draw down the water level tank so far, because you need to have some storage for fire flows, and in the event of a fire, you don't want to obviously run out of water. So it, it drops that level, and then when a day when it's not, we bring the level back up. Does that make sense? Yeah. Great question. Observant question. Okay.
I also would just ask that anybody who's going to ask a question, do it in a microphone so that they can hear you over there. Otherwise, they don't hear the questions.
Are those mics on?
Yes.
Okay.
It might be best if we save as many questions as possible until he's done, just so that way he's able to get through the presentation first.
Sorry, I was just saying that if we wait till the end to ask some questions, just that way, A, questions might be answered, and B, it just allows him to get through the presentation, and then we can take as many questions as possible.
And I will gladly, we're, we're here all night, so we can go back and answer as many questions as we need to. So when we're looking at going through the State R SRF, we also have to accommodate some annual costs. So we looked at staffing, we looked at the chemical costs, to incorporate those into the cost, and we came up with an annual cost of roughly $819,000, including staffing. When we're looking at a comparison of the different alternatives, so you can see in this table, this is just kind of a summary. All these alternatives can meet the current demands. They all have a, a fair amount of chemical use. They all have the same level of redundancy and resiliency, so they can meet the average day demand with one unit out of service. We can do both, the peak day demands with both trains in service. The expansion capability was a big deal, and just in the event that the town grew more, or they're not stuck in a position they're in now. So Alternative 4 is a little bit easier to accommodate growth because it has a smaller footprint. Alternatives 1 and 4 were a little bit more accommodating for changes in water quality coming off the Colorado River. In energy use, they're all roughly about the same. So some of the recommendations. The water plant is not in a good spot. It struggles to provide, it, it could struggle to, or cannot provide the average day demand with one unit out of service. We're looking at a ballasted flaculation process with mixed media filtration to accommodate the wide range and turbidity of water coming off the Colorado River. And we can improve the water taste, color, and odor by removing iron and manganese in the system in the same footprint. We're recommending it be performed in two phases. One, doing the capacity and pre-treatment improvements now, and including the iron and manganese to address the water taste and odor issues. And a second phase, if needed in the future, to improve redundancy should the town grow or they decide not to expand their raw water irrigation system. Here's a new, uh, process flow diagram. So it would come off the Colorado River, go through a strainer, go through this flaculation process where we essentially remove all the particles and the milkiness from the Colorado River. We then go through some sand filters, which will, and in that sand filter, we'd also remove the iron and manganese. And that will improve the water quality, so the taste and odor and color issues will go away. We'll then disinfect the water, and it will go out to the, back out to the residents. One of the ways we're looking at, because we understand that cost is a big issue with the community, we want to make sure we can provide the most cost-effective treatment system, is doing this construction manager at-risk delivery method. What that does is it brings a contractor into the project in early, brings them in during the design process, because during the design process, we can have a huge impact on costs. They then assist with value engineering items during the design where costs can be most impacted. So one of the value engineering processes we are looking at now, where we want to bring them in, is the building type, going with the masonry versus steel building, because in the commodities market, those prices seem to change very rapidly, and they can best tell us which one is going to be the most cost-effective. And then looking at the filtration design, there's some things we can do. We can do it on slab, or we can do it in customized filters. The customized filters can be a little bit smaller, but they're a little more intricate in the concrete design, and we want to talk to a contractor that can tell us which one is going to be the cheapest to build. But they'll come in during the design process and work through it all the way through the So because this is federally funded, we have to address some environmental issues. So we sent out scoping letters talking about the project to all these different agencies listed here, including the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the Colorado Office of Archaeology and Historic Preservation, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, Natural Resources Conservation Service, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, Department of Natural Resources, the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, and the U.S. National Park Service. They responded. We sent out these letters. They have 30 days to respond. We did not receive any responses with the, with those letters. That is a, a good thing going forward. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jim to talk a little bit about project financing.
So the, uh, the project itself is totaled roughly around $28 million. As Patrick mentioned, currently through the SRF, the State Revolving Fund, the loan fund that is funded through the EPA, um, with the Infrastructure Improvement and Jobs Act approval, which is the infrastructure bill, uh, there was a significant amount of money that was earmarked for water projects, wastewater projects, transportation projects. It's anticipated at this point that we will be able to achieve roughly about a $5 million principal forgiveness. So you'll be able to take about $5 million of the cost of the project off, and that's going to be funded through the federal government. We have to fund the rest of it. So we end up having to borrow just under $22 million, and we're looking at borrowing through the Colorado Water Resources and Power Development Authority. It's a, a pooled resource funding program that provides great benefit to the borrowers simply because interest rates, everyone knows interest rates have gone up, and they have gone up. But the way the, uh, the authority works is that the interest rate that municipalities or utilities end up paying is roughly about 80% of what the market rate is. So just as a rough example, if your, uh, interest rate was 5%, your effective interest rate would be 4% because the other 20% is picked up by the SRF. And that's part of the way the SRF helps communities finance some of these projects through lower interest rates. We're looking at a 20-year financing. The, the SRF will go up to 30 years. The problem with going up to 30 years is that the plant's designed for a 20-year life. And the last thing you want to do is be paying for two plants after you, you know, because it's designed for 20 years, and if you still got another 10 years to pay off, you're double, double counting. And so that, that creates a problem. Right now, our estimated interest rate would be just under 3.5% for, uh, for the town, which is a, a pretty, pretty competitive. What does it mean to you guys? Everyone wants to know what it means to you. There's a couple of things that are going to happen with the construction of the plant. And as Patrick talked about, we're planning for some rather significant growth in the community. Make sure the plant can handle that growth, so you're not in a situation when some sort of growth comes up and you don't have a capacity to be able to serve them.
Is that a problem?
Um, the, um, when you look at the roughly $28 million cost of the plant, it works out that about 2/3 of the cost of the plant is just replacing what you have in kind to serve the existing population. The remaining third is, uh, really for growth and development. And how do we pay for that? Currently, um, the, the town charges a connection fee or a tap fee to new development, and that tap fee, I think the old was 6,000 and change. The current, uh, they've moved it up to 10,000. Our recommendation is that you actually move that tap fee up to just under $14,000. And that, those dollars coming in will pay for really that growth and development.
That's what they said 20 years ago.
The growth and development has to occur. And, and.
It's over, it's overdone.
And, 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 and point, point being is those dollars have to come in the door, and they have to be used to, to help offset the rates. We've looked at it from that perspective, and, and when you look at that earlier slide that Patrick went through in terms of the growth and development, we all know growth happens on a nonlinear basis, but we don't have any way to project it out. So we've projected it out on a linear basis, where a certain number of units are being built on an annual basis.
I know Justin asked a whole lot of questions, but I have to ask this one. All the tap fees and all the monthly fees that we've been paying, how much is in that fund compared to that 28 million? There should be a substantial amount, right? Or has that all been blown?
Oh, I think, I'll let maybe Treasurer Tucker look. Like, I think maybe in our water, wastewater fund, we had 5 million, roughly 5 and 1/2 million.
Off the top of my head, I wouldn't.
I think. We could prob, we'll, we can get that information pretty quickly from our treasurer here, let you know what's in that fund.
It should be a, it should be a pretty substantial.
There, so there is, yeah, there is a pretty substantial amount of money in that, in that fund. So maybe we can get that. I don't know if Jeff is listening, and I don't know if Amy's here, but.
Jeff's right around the corner.
She probably, oh, can we get that, Jeff?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So there'll be a combination of increased tap fees, but what does it mean to the average user? And that's what you all want to know about. The average user in the town, residential user, uses about, just about 3, 3,800 gallons a month. And right now, the rate structure, uh, the base rate includes the first 2,000 gallons of water that you use, and then you pay a volumetric charge for every gallon of water after that first 2,000. The current base rate is around $45. It would need to go up to about $70.75, and then the volumetric on top of that. At the end of the day, for that person, that family or that residence using the 3,800 gallons a month, it's about a $100 increase on a monthly basis that you're looking at, based upon the numbers that we've got here of a $28 million plant, $5 million coming from the federal government, the additional tap fees coming in. Now, we can't use the tap fees on an annual basis because they actually have to show up. So we have to increase the rates enough to be able to generate enough dollars. And that's where the $100 a month increase is coming from.
I would like to make one point on all of this while he's giving this, um, presentation, who, and he's also giving this presentation to us. None of this has been decided on. So when he's saying that this plant is being built, this plant's going to cost this much, these are what your rates on, none of this has been voted on or decided on. If, okay, so for everybody that's not sure about that, and you're sitting there thinking, hey, this is happening for sure, we don't know that this is happening right now.
Why are our water rates going up 15% next month?
So there are three.
And they didn't warn us.
What's that?
They didn't warn us, you know how they always print at the bottom of your water bill events and things coming up? They didn't say, oh, wait a minute, you better hold back on Christmas for your grandkids because your water rates are going up.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
We're not going to tell you until you get the bill in January.
I don't know about the notices on, like, water rates. I know that we spend a couple of months going through, like, the budget process and sending that information out, though I guess I'm not sure, you know, in what way that information... I guess I'm not sure, you know, in what way that information gets to the residents, but we could discuss that. But I I wanted to just make the comment that these proposals have not been decided on.
But they're already working their way to the 70, 75 with this next bump.
Well, what's happening with this is what we're looking at is this particular plant, and and what they're proposing is these are the finances on that. So we're here, I mean, you guys all have to understand, I think you do, that we live here too, and we pay these rates also. So this is just important to us as it is to you guys when we look at this information. So that's all, I just wanted to, I just want to let you guys know that we haven't voted on this, to say, yeah, this is what we're doing. We're just getting this information alongside with you, and then listening to your questions, getting your feedback, and then we'll do the same to you, if that makes sense, so.
Kyle, amongst your proposal, can you consider for long-term residents, a little less of a percentage, so the people that have lived here 20, 30, 40 years?
Well, I think part of, well, I think we're going to get into the weeds on this, and maybe we we have this conversation, but we've definitely had discussions depending on what and how we decide to address the issue with the water treatment plant needing to be modified, you know, is how we do that, right? Really, how do we lessen the impact as much as we can? And we're still getting that information as trustees as well, so. Okay.
Okay, I have fund balance numbers if you'd like them.
Yeah.
So right now, the fund balance.
Sorry, this is Treasurer Tucker, this is Amy Tucker, she's the town treasurer.
Right now, our fund balance in the water plant is about $3 million, but according to our financial policy and procedures, we need to keep about 20% of our operating expenses in the bank, which allows you to spend about 2.2 million on the plant.
So to Kyle's point, yes, this is just, we are currently in the planning level stages, so we're just sharing this information with the public, and we do, I do want to stress that we understand cost is a very big deal, and we're trying to find every way possible to make sure the town has a resilient water plant while minimizing the costs. So looking at the project schedule, we're trying to complete the design through the end of this year. We want to bring this construction manager onboard next month. We were looking to submit a loan application to CDPHE and the SRF program in June, money would then be available in September, with construction starting in 2024, with construction completed the end of hopefully 2025, roughly a two-year construction period. So just a quick few summary and conclusions, the the current water plant is in a precarious position because it it will struggle to provide the average day demand with one unit out of service. The proposed water plant would be more resilient, so it could provide the projected average day demand with one unit out of service. It would have better finished water quality, the water would have an improved taste and lack the color issues, because the water plant would treat for iron and manganese, and will meet the current and upcoming regulations that we are currently aware of. And it would set up for basically now to accommodate all the plans and have a little bit of spare capacity that it could accommodate a little bit more growth. And with that, I would open up the floor, and if you do have a question, because we have people in the other room, if you could just approach the microphone, and we have time to, plenty of time to address people's questions, I don't want to take up your guys' time also, but we want to make sure everybody shares as much information as we can and get it out, because we want this to be an open book policy. So please step up the microphone and let's let's have a great discussion.
So back in 2005, the current plant was built, I believe it was finished in 2005. The designer on that plant, where are they? They designed it for future use. Wouldn't it be a whole lot cheaper to have them come in and continue on on their design like they did, instead of bringing, nothing against you guys, but they already have a design. They know what they're going to build. They could save us millions, I think.
So I would like to piggyback on his question, because that's the same question that I've been asking since we started this process, is why are we not able to engineer and modify our current plant to meet the current peak demand while also planning for future demand? Why do we need a completely new water plant over there?
Okay, there's several different questions to that, several, so it's a pretty broad question, I'm going to try to answer it. There are two different processes at the water plant, and the current one was set up when they did set it up, that engineer did recommend they put in a pre-treatment system. There is a quasi-pre-treatment system over there, but it does not work. The the membrane system itself was, in the in the in the requirements for the membrane system, it has to have a certain water quality coming to it, and we we refer to that water quality, and this in this specific term is turbidity. It has to have below a 1 turbidity. The current plant with that quasi-pre-treatment system has a turbidity coming to the membranes of somewhere between 200 and 500. The membranes request a turbidity less than 1. It doesn't work, flat out. It's like if you wanted to take a Kia and treat it like a pickup truck, you can try, you are welcome to try, it will not work.
So it hasn't been working.
Has not worked. That engineer did recommend they put in a big pre-treatment system, I don't know what happened at that point in time, that's as much information as I can find.
Maybe maybe Jeff knows this, I don't know if you do, and maybe Tony knows, I wasn't here in 2005 when that was built. I know that SGM engineered and built the wastewater treatment plant? Are they the same engineering firm that we know, did they engineer and build our water treatment?
I believe it was the same.
Yes.
I believe it was this year.
So we can put in a pre-treatment system, and that is a large majority of the cost. We do have to then expand the filters to give them more space. We can do that no problem. We've got to accommodate some things, but that is included in one of the alternatives that we looked at, and I know it seems unbelievable, but that's really what it costs. We have to put in a few more membrane modules. That membrane module system, like many things in this world, has moved forward in technologies, or the technology has evolved. Those membrane systems essentially suck water through them. 99.99% of the membrane systems, or I talked to one manufacturer, they sold two suction systems out of the over 3,000 they sold last year. Three of them were suction, everybody else pushes through a membrane. It's newer technology, you can do it in a smaller footprint. We would put those into the new system. We'd still have to build a new building because there's no space in the existing one. And doing that, unfortunately, putting in a building costs money, and we did look at that, and tried to do that, for the same very concerns you have, but it all comes down to the pre-treatment system. And the pre-treatment system is a little more than half the cost. Almost 60%.
Is there no recourse against the old sales company?
I cannot find any documentation, other than the fact that they recommended a pre-treatment system going in, I don't know what happened at that point in time, maybe, I don't know if anybody else has any more to say on that, who has maybe been around longer or associated with the project longer. Is that fair to say, Tony?
I believe so, I mean, the other thing about the membranes, basically, is that they were really, they were, the membranes were originally approved and designed as a 1-MGD system, but the capacity of them, we still have to go back, is like .3, .3 each, but no matter how hard we push the suction membranes, they just, we can't get the flow through that they were originally approved for. Now, we just actually went through a record of approved waterworks with the CDPHE, and they're considering like re-rating the plant actually for a half MGD instead of the full MGD, because there is no resiliency with the filters themselves. So it takes both filters, in a perfect day, on a perfect world, to be able to run the full 1-MGD, which just really never has happened. And so that that, they were originally designed with the hope that that's what they were going to get through them, but the actual physical capacity of the membranes is not there.
So to your point, going forward in the future, we want to ensure that that resiliency is provided, so that you're not, well, we're not here in 20 years.
We have a question over here.
Pat?
Can I take a question?
Yes. I can, I want to.
We have a question over here, please.
Okay.
And we're buffering so bad over there, we don't know what's going on. So I just came to ask my question, a couple of questions, it's okay?
Okay. Can you hop to my friend, please?
Should we, should we take the one that was on?
Yeah.
Online really quick, and then we can get to yours, though?
Come here.
Yeah.
Yeah, hang on, here they come, Patrick.
Okay.
So going back to that question, or going back to answer the, or the statement that you just made about the the old treatment plant that couldn't keep up, or that the suction or whatever, he stated that on a perfect day, they both had to be operating at, you know, perfect or whatever. Well, how long has this been going on, and why haven't we done anything about it before this? I mean, why why did we wait so long? I I heard that in 2005 is original plant, and then 2011, you guys were having water water issues and nothing was done? And now you waited, you waited all those years till now to do something about it?
I wonder if that's something that maybe Jeff could possibly address too, or?
Well, I think Tony's been around on this, but the bottom line is, for the last three years, Tony?
Right.
We've been working on getting the plant, maybe I should use a microphone.
Yeah. I'll let, I'll let Jeff address that too, a little bit of insight into that, so I've been a part of this board since 2018. In 2018, when the, when Mayor Reichel was elected alongside myself, you know, we made a few changes within the town staff, and shortly thereafter, there was some turnover on the, you know, the employees at the town, and one of them was the previous water treatment, I guess you would call the operator, if you will. So up until that point, while I was on the board, all of our feedback was that we were in good shape, that we didn't really have any issues with the water treatment plant. And then when Tony came onboard and kind of became our ORC, and his firm started saying, hey, like, we've got some deferred maintenance over here that we really need to start addressing. So like, so I'll let Jeff and them kind of expand on that, but at least within the last three years, you know, I think that we've had some pretty in-depth discussions about the deficiencies that that plant's had, and we've done a lot of maintenance on that plant, and in, and during that period of doing all of that maintenance, there's been, you know, this discussion that, you know, keeps coming up like, hey, like, I think we might need a new water plant here. And then that discussion really got deep within probably the last year and a half. So, but maybe you can expand on maybe what's been done over there.
I don't have anything to add to that, Kyle, I think you you covered it. I mean, as soon as Tony came on about two years or so ago, we've been, as our ORC, our operator in responsible charge, we've been working hard to just to replace some of the systems and stuff that had been taken down. We didn't even, we didn't know enough about what we were actually producing. So we had to work on that first before we could even say whether or not we, what we needed. So that's really what we've been doing over the last two years, Tony, or so.
We needed to quit approving the subdivision.
And there isn't anybody who's on town staff or any of the boards now that was here in 2005. I mean, everybody at the water plant, they're all, they're, the entire water plant crew is is new, you know, so they're not here from them, and obviously.
It's been one of those, it's been one of those things where, since I've been here, that whole staff got turned over, and actually got self-starters, got motivated people, got an ORC, a new ORC to come in, and that's how you find these issues. Before, everything was being said that everything's running fine, there's no reason to go to the board and complain and and ask for money, because everything's fine, everything's fine. In reality, it wasn't. In reality, it was bandaged together, and I, and it might have been a mentality of make it work. That seems to happen to municipality, make it work, save money, make it work. Who knows where it came from? Who knows how it got this far along? But this is the situation we have now, and this is, we're trying to come up with ideas to solve these problems, you know? And here's, this is where we're at. We're all in the same boat together, and there's holes in it.
One, I know you have a couple of questions. From a board standpoint, on the on the subdivision, on the development part, I remember, you know, it wasn't long ago, we did a water rate study, and our water engineer actually came in and gave us a presentation regarding the amount of water rates that the town had, and it was, and and we kind of looked at that with our already approved subdivisions, Stony Ridge, Eagles View, Iron Horse Mesa, I mean, I think there's like 30 houses, like, that thing's, that thing was approved like five different phases up there. You know, so at the time, we had the water, and it was our understanding that we had the water treatment plant to produce and and give them that water. And what he had said earlier is, a third of what we're looking for in this new plant, if we go that way, is to accommodate the growth, 2/3 of it is to provide water for the already-built subdivisions and homes that are here now. So we do take that into consideration. In fact, I remember Sam bringing that up in one of our discussions not long ago, in terms of what sort of liability do we have approving new subdivisions, knowing that we've got some issues with the water treatment plant. So it's definitely a discussion that we that we have almost bi-weekly at these meetings. I know you had a couple of questions, you came over if you want to.
Yeah, this may be a repeat, because we are not really getting good service over there, so.
Sorry about that.
Okay, so is there no way to put in the appropriate pre-treatment in front of these membranes?
So the appropriate pre-treatment can be in, and when we break out the cost, it's roughly 2/3-ish, 60% of the total cost that we're looking at, and then to expand the filtration system is the range of the cost. So even if we put in pre-treatment, we'd have to expand the filtration system, because there's a lack of resiliency and redundancy within that. So I would, trying to equate that analogy, like in a car, if, going back to the Kia, it's only going to go so fast, this membrane system is only going to produce half an MGD, that's it. And there's no more, there's nothing we can't get, we can't get out of it, it's on a perfect day with everything running. If something goes wrong, it's less than that. And we want to make sure, the town wants to make sure, I believe, you know, to keep water to its residents. So there's, while we can put in a pre-treatment system, yes, that would help, but it doesn't address the the issues on the resiliency side for actually producing water. So it's kind of a two-pronged question, I'm sorry, trying to break it down in simple and say, yes, the pre-treatment system can be addressed, but it still doesn't address the production issue on the membrane side.
Okay. I just think it's mind-blowing, when we moved here in 2011, that we were told we had a state-of-the-art water plant, and we were getting never-sunsetting increases of 3% plus a year, that were basically, they're exponential increases, because you're paying 3% on the, is it 6?
3% every six months.
Okay, so.
15% every six months, which means 30 by July 1st.
So like, I'll tell you, when we moved in, our town bill was $170 a month, including irrigation and everything else, we're now at 245 a month or so, which is pretty high. And I did want to make a comment, that my husband came last time, and he was hearing that this could be kind of comparative to other towns, and the one thing I also want to point out, is if, you know, if we are looking at the the water rates of other towns and the comparativeness of it, are you including the fact that our irrigation is separate from our water? And are these other towns we're comparing to, are we comparing apples to apples, where you're looking at, you know, we pay $100 almost a month for irrigation right now? So you have to kind of include whether or not these towns are already paying an irrigation, you know, separate from their water bill, or are they watering their lawns with their water bill? So it may not be comparable, you know, I I don't know, I haven't seen the numbers yet, but I just kind of wanted to point that out, that we do have a very high irrigation bill here too. So, I mean, this is really going to break some families.
I'd like to clarify something about the increase in the water rates.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
When somebody misspoke and said it went up 6% every year. When somebody misspoke and said it went up 6% every year, your water rates go up in January, the trash goes up in June. It's not your water rates again.
Oh, it's the trash.
And your irrigation can be lowered if you choose to have less yard. Your irrigation is based off of the square footage of your yard. So if you want to go down to 3,500 square feet or less, you can have a $16 irrigation bill.
Yeah, mine's $15 a month.
So, the irrigation price that you're paying is based on your yard space. Not everybody is equal. If you have a larger yard, you pay more money.
Yeah, there was actually, we did a little initiative to where the town was kind of doing a, an audit, if you will, right? And we even put in place this year that if certain people wanted to do some zero scape in their yard, correct me on this, but I believe we had a fund where we would even match it for a couple of dollars to kind of help if you wanted to put in some rock or something else to like make your irrigatable, irrigatable space a little bit smaller to then reduce your irrigation bill. I do think in his presentation on like the water rates, I think maybe it was more on the growth aspect of it that they did take into consideration that we have raw water irrigation system and not using potable water to irrigate. There's only a couple, I think, like the Silt Trade Center uses potable water. And then, I don't know if anybody here lives in Iron Horse Mesa up off of First Street. I think you guys use potable water up there to, to irrigate. But everybody else, I think, in main town and then Stony Ridge, Eagles View, and then Mesa View, I think use raw water for their irrigation, so.
And to compare town, towns to town, Rifle put in a 15 million gallon water plant for $30 million. We're put, this is proposal for 2 million gallon for $30 million.
But how much is their water rates?
Well, no, just comparing apples to apples, the amount of, how many gallons they got, they, for $30 million, they got 15 million gallons. For 2 million gallons, we're getting, it's costing 30 million.
Well, that's unfortunately construction costs.
And that's construction costs, that's the environment we live in. You know, if this would have been 10 years ago, this would be.
It was.
It would be.
Yeah, almost was.
Irrigation, it's how many taps you have. How many things you have hooked up that come out on your property, how many do you have? For each one, it's 1686.
Yeah, I don't know. I just wanted to point out the comparative of, you know, the fact that if we are being told, oh, you're going to be paying what other towns are paying and it's comparative, you know, are we really? When we consider the irrigation? And I did have one other question. I was told by a previous board member years ago that we had enough water and, or money in the water fund that we were loaning that money out to the development, to the development section. I guess, I just want to know, was that all paid back to our water fund?
I don't know about that.
So.
Is it a Dollar General thing and it's being paid back as they go, right?
I wonder if Treasurer Tucker might know?
Yeah, she, she knows.
So, we loaned out $170,000 for infrastructure for the dollar store. And it is being paid back to the water plant through their property taxes. So, $170,000 is all that was loaned out.
That's not, that's not just all, that's a lot of money.
Yeah. Do we know when that is scheduled to be completely paid back, Amy?
2028, I believe.
Okay, five more years.
As far as Rifle goes, I know several residents that live in Rifle and they said, so it wasn't such an impact on all families and everything, that they were going to add, was it 1.2% higher tax rate? So people passing through Rifle that shop at all the stores like Walmart or whatever, that's where they were getting their extra wa- water money. I was just told that, I don't, I didn't investigate.
That's a good point. That's the meat and potatoes of why everyone's here, I feel. How do we pay for something like this? Obviously, some, this has to happen, something has to happen. How do we pay for it? I think that's on, on all of our minds, all of your minds. And that's like, we have to get creative. We have to have, rely on these guys to come up with ideas that are within, within what we can do to make it happen.
Did you have a question?
Yeah.
So, are iron and manganese, are they detrimental to health?
Great question.
And like the taste too.
Like, like anything, right? If you have too much anything, it's, it's bad. Iron or manganese, by the EPA, public drinking water standards, you can even look at it, European standards, they are secondary standards, mostly implicating to how people view and taste their water. And those standards are pretty low, but they don't have any health impacts. It's primarily a taste, color, and odor issues. Like, if you're, if you have a purple stain, it's manganese. If you have a red, orange stain, it's iron. No real health issues, but it is going to, you're going to taste it and you might smell it and you might get some stains.
So, how much more is the cost for, you said that there, you're specifically addressing removing iron and manganese?
Yes.
Would it cost less if we didn't address that issue?
You know, the iron and manganese system, if, if we, looking at, just going with membrane system, we got to do a standalone system, it's roughly half million to a million dollars. If we can do it in a mixed media filter, we can put it right in the media itself. And it's no real, just a minor added cost because we have to put the, the media in there and we can use this. We can just put that media in the system, so maybe 100,000, 200,000, not, not a small amount. But it does impact the cost, but it's.
So that's not going to really affect the bottom line much?
That's not the major cost, no.
The, the biggest cost, the pre-treatment is roughly two-thirds of the cost.
Thank you.
Great question.
We have another question in the town center.
Okay, go ahead. Yeah, and then we'll let you answer, and then I know you've got a question too. We'll have you come up to the mic and.
Yeah.
Okay, Trey answered the question that we had here.
What was it?
Yeah, can you share that, please?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, the question was, do we have all surface water from Colorado or do we have any wells?
Oh, okay.
And or, and or could we have wells? Trey says we have wells.
We do have.
They don't produce enough, they're used for backup, if, if I understood it correct.
That's a pretty fair statement.
Do you want to, do you want to ask your question?
Yeah, so I kind of have a couple that are, they piggyback off of each other. Going off of your proposal, I'm a numbers person. So, first off, talking about our projected growth, how did you guys use the numbers that you're using? Did you look at the past 12 to 24 months? I mean, the last couple of years in our valley, everybody's been moving further and further down. So I think Silt's going to see a lot more growth than they have in the last five or 10 previous years. So how did you choose, how did you get to that number?
Great question. So we looked at data from both the Department of Local Affairs, DOLA through the CPHE, and through Garfield County, looking at their population projections and used them. I forget the annual percentage rate, but it was a little bit higher than straight lining it. Maybe Tony remembers the number. The number that comes to mind, and I'm sure I screwed up because every time I do this, Tony corrects me, is like 3.2%. I believe it was either 3.2 or 3.7. Okay. But it was, yes, but they were in, they were, they ended up being in line with both projections from the Department of Local Affairs and Garfield County.
So, that being said.
And, and the town's own planning department.
Okay. The, that being said, that million-dollar mark that we're trying to, not million dollars, excuse me, a million a day, is that safe to say? Are we going to be here in another 10 or 15 years having this same discussion because we weren't aggressive enough in our future planning?
So, great, great comment. So, one of the things that we're trying to do when we, we want to accommodate when we set this thing up is that designing for two 1-MGD trains now and having like a stubout where they can just come in and put the third one in should they need to. And a value engineering proposition is, do we build that building now or do we leave the building off? I, I don't know, but we could have that discussion when we get there and bring this construction manager on board.
Okay, perfect, because that essentially.
That's, that is a, we don't want to.
Yeah. We need to not be where we are right now in another 15 years. We need to be more proactive for our future than the town ever has been.
We want to have, it's set up for three chains and if, if we can accommodate putting the building there now, so it's really easy, great. If we want to minimize costs now, I mean, that's a discussion that global, we, I'm referring to everybody in this room and online can have at that point in time.
And that essentially leads to my third question, which is, if we do need to have that expansion, the current site that we're proposing, can, we can?
We can, we can fit three-ish MGD on there.
Okay. And that would probably be our limit for the space.
Probably be pretty close to maxed out at that point in time.
Okay.
Do you want to come ask your question really quick?
Great questions.
Yeah, just on the funding side with where we're thinking about borrowing, does that allow a, a payment of principal at any given time?
Yes. You can prepay principal, so if a large development were to come in and pay down a bunch of tap fees, you could pay off some of the.
Okay, because that certainly seems like, when you were talking about earlier with the tap fees do not come in sequentially or in a, in a straight line, that would be, allow that to occur. And also splitting it one-third, two-thirds, when we're talking about some of the people have been here for a long time. I haven't been, I'm glad I'm here now. But I come from a small town of about 3,000 when I grew up. But there's also no reason to keep it a third going forward. People that are going to benefit from the town in the future, maybe it's four or 5,000 increase in tap fees versus the three that are proposed, just a thought.
Understood. Does anybody else have any questions they want to answer or ask?
I did want to ask one more about grants. Have we done any grant exploration?
We have, like, very in-depth exploration of grants. And maybe we can get more in-depth about that in one of our meetings, I suppose. We could do it here, I know we're.
I can, I can address it real quick. So when we're going through a SRF, there is an engineering grant that we can apply for when we go through this thing. And I forget the amount, but it's 300,000 or 600,000, it's a pretty significant amount. There's also, they will not call it a grant, but this principle of forgiveness. When I first, when we start, first met with the, the funding agencies and are talking about it, we refer to it as grant. They corrected us in saying, no, it is principle of forgiveness, they want to make sure of it. But in all, it essentially serves as a grant. Just, when we're talking with funding agencies, they're very adamant, this is principle of forgiveness. For whatever reason. We've also looked at, there's also, I'm still, sorry.
Sorry.
There's also multiple different funding agencies available that offer many different grants, but they're also in the 30 to 50,000 range and they also have multiple different administrative requirements. So if we put, piece together 50,000 grants, we have to write progress reports. Somebody within the town would have to write progress reports and accounting reports for each one. And anytime there's a change, document that and it would become an administrative nightmare. It's unfortunate, but that's, that's the way we've looked at it.
I think the big answer to, or answer to your question is that through the SRF, the revolving loan fund, through the EPA, with the Infrastructure Improvement and Jobs Act, there's a significant amount of money that has been given to the system that is to be used to offset water projects. And at this point, our early read is that the, the town would be eligible for approximately $5 million of principal forgiveness on the cost of the project. We talked about, you probably missed it in the other room.
Okay, do you have a question?
I've got a few and I'm sure that there's, there's many others that have the same questions. And money is the biggest thing on a lot of people's minds. I've been in Silt since 1999 and I'd like to say this is a beautiful place to be a part of a community. And there's a lot of hard-working people in this town or for the town that I duly respect and I respect all of you. But I would like to ask, you know, that you would take serious consideration in looking for every alternative of being able to finance this because with those kind of hikes on, on a person's utility bill, not everybody, but this town is basically, you know, a bedroom community of the working class. And, you know, people just can't pull money out of thin air just because all of a sudden we're in the midst of something that needs to be addressed. And I can respect the fact that we, we do need a new water plant if, if that's the case. But, you know, I'm like looking at projects and stuff that were done and like in my neighborhood with a chip and seal job that has basically turned out pretty bad and faulty. And it's like now we get gravel mixed in with the snow on the sidewalk that we're supposed to shovel into our yards and everything. So, I mean, would you be open to like any citizen or anybody that may have, you know, information on other grants or other things that would help alleviate the cost to the individual on our water bills? I mean, it's pretty steep right now, it's escalating inflation. I mean, everywhere you go, I mean, I'm hearing horror stories of people, you know, 3, 400 dollars a month in heating bills and stuff. And that's just killing people. And I'm afraid that, you know, there's going to be a, a good portion of our citizens, they're not going to be able to pay their water bills and they're going to get shut off. Not because, you know, I mean, they're, they're just shoved into a corner. And I mean, I'd like to see Silt, Silt stay an affordable, you know, real community, not Aspen, not Carbondale, but, you know, Silt, you know, with, with rock-solid heart of, of people. And, you know, I mean, I, I got a other list of concerns, but I know that, you know, some of this come from other people and I'll let them address that. But this is a very serious issue and I'm just concerned that, especially with people on fixed income and, and whatnot. And I, I would hope that you'd be open. I've got information from a friend of mine from Monument that sent me links to some grants that you may not be aware of. And so if all of us independently could maybe present those, if it's a possibility.
Of course, yeah, to answer that, yes, you can send it to any trustee, we'll send it to our town administrator, we can give you information.
Bring him in and give him to Jeff directly.
To our town administrator.
Especially if you get grants that don't have to be paid back.
Yeah, and we, we do have a regular meeting, it's supposed to start at seven, so I'm going to find out from our administrator. I'm not sure if our mayor is here yet, but for everybody that didn't hear what I had mentioned at the beginning of that, maybe that walked in from the other side, all of the information that we've been given tonight, like, nothing's been decided on. So that's really important to know. So we are still fact gathering, we are still discussing. We would love it if there was this many people at every single town meeting. I know they're boring most of the time, but we make our decisions based on the feedback that you guys give us. What's that?
Say you won't let us speak at those meetings.
We will, so on. On the agenda, you can give public comments, it's three minutes, but generally it's three minutes uninterrupted. You know, not a back and forth or whatever, but, you know, and we value that information. We need that feedback from, from you, we want to hear it, so.
But real quick, I'd like to say I'm a friend of Sam Walls and I talked to him tonight to try to get a little bit educated on how to present myself, you know, and, and how to, you know, this is my first go-around and he told me to tell all of you hello.
That's awesome, yes.
But, you know, projects like that chip and seal and stuff like that, I'm also just wondering, and stuff like that, can maybe put a ceasefire on stuff like that, use those funds towards what's really important?
So that's, that's a really important question. We've gotten into the weeds on that too because there's different types of funds that we can use as a municipality. I brought up the point, it was my own opinion and I'll let the board, we can all decide on that. But I thought while we went through this process of trying to determine how we attack the issue at our water treatment plant, that we don't neglect other parts of the town, whether that be streets or sidewalks or parks or anything else, if that makes sense, right? We, we can attack the water treatment plant with the funds that we have available whilst still taking care of other parts of the town, so.
We, we, we may not be able to afford that.
Came from the general fund.
Sure.
It didn't come from the water fund. The money that we use for streets is from a completely different fund that is not allowed, we're only allowed, the water fund is only allowed to take 10% in.
From other funds.
Of, from other funds.
So we, so as a municipality, we're somewhat limited.
Is that coming from the state or is that something that go back to the voters and readjusted?
No, that's because it's an enterprise fund and that's, that's just a stipulation, that it can't have more than 10% of its revenues coming from the state or even from the general fund. The general fund, we would only be able to loan, so to speak, or give the water fund, water fund, about 30, $300,000 is all we'd be able to give them, or we would step out of that enterprise fund. And then anytime we'd have to have an increase in revenues or, I mean, expenditures, we'd have to go to the vote of the people if we step out of that enterprise standing.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mayor Pro Tim Knott was correct. We have a, a regular meeting that's going to start, supposed to start at seven o'clock. One bit of news that came out this evening that Pat talked about was the fact that we won't be applying for that loan until June. So there will be a lot of time to have a, a lot more community conversation about this. As time goes on and Mayor Knott, or Mayor Pro Tim Knott also mentioned that no decisions have been made. What you, you're, you're kind of on the ground floor of this decision-making process. We are, all of us are still in an information gathering sort of mode. We don't know what we don't know yet. We're still collecting information. You're, you're hearing it as we.
You're, you're hearing it as we hear it, and if you've been reading the newsletter, uh, you've been seeing stuff in there for probably about eighteen months. So the town of Silt has a newsletter, comes out about every week, every week, online. We'll send it to you. You can go to the town.
It's not on Facebook.
For sure, yeah, yeah. We don't do, we don't do business on Facebook, we do it, uh, right in here.
That's what they used to do. They used to even bring it.
Okay, all right. Anyway, keep your, uh, keep your eyes open, we will be having more public sessions and, uh, inviting a lot more public comment, so happy to have you.
Question, it doesn't have to do with water, but how are we going to pay for our deteriorating roads and streets around here that are in horrible, horrible shape? Are we going to get a huge tax increase? It's, these streets are horrible.
We've got, uh, several plans in place, uh, to, to address a little by little, uh, the streets. We've got some, uh, I think there's a tray maybe on, uh, in the other room, but I think we've got a section of Grand Avenue that's going to be, uh, replaced this year. We're working on Terra, uh, the Terra neighborhood this year. You know, we're, we're doing streets as we can, so, uh, to, Mike, we're, we're on it.
I just don't want, you know, six months from now, get a huge, notice that my taxes are going to go way up on top of this.
That would have to be voted on. Any taxing increase would be, would be a vote, we can't. We can't do that.
On the west end of town, down at the end of Home, west end of Home.
Can we address the drag racing that goes on through town?
If, if, if anyone would like, if, if you, if you would like to stay for public comments.
Three houses from the end, it's sixteen.
Okay, sir. We have to start a meeting. If you would like to stay for a public comment, sir, you can sign in and wait for our public comments.
Which?
Yes, so please sign in.
Oh, by the way, one last thing. This is recorded and will be on community TV, so you can, if you missed anything, you can watch the whole thing.
Sixteenth, are you at?
That'll come up.